County Board of Commissioners, we have a great lively group this morning. This is wonderful. Would you please join me in reciting the pledge of allegiance to our flag?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I'm Barb Lewis, President of the Board. To my left is our Vice President Jeff Benton, to my right Fellow Commissioner Gary Merrill, and our Administrator Tracy Davies, our Deputy Administrator Don Houston, and our Deputy Administrator and General Counsel Eric Hostetler, and our Clerks Jennifer Wallraven, and we have a special Clerk with us today, Hallie Guzic. We can begin.
Resolution number 25-932, in the matter of approving electronic record of proceedings from regular meeting held November 6, 2025.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion, vote.
Vote on motion 25-932, Mrs. Lewis.
Aye.
Mr. Merrill.
Aye.
Mr. Benton.
Aye.
We do not have any public comment today. That brings us to item number three, resolution number 25-933, in the matter of approving purchase orders and announced certificates and payments of warrants in batch number CMAPR1107.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion, vote.
Vote on motion 25-933, Mr. Benton.
Aye.
Mrs. Lewis.
Aye.
Mr. Merrill.
Aye.
Resolution number 25-934, in the matter of approving a proclamation recognizing World Day of Remembrance for traffic victims.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. We have some special guests with us today, and so we'll have some discussion. This is a sad day, very sad to remember, but it's important that we do remember.
That's right.
Welcome.
Thank you. Thank you for acknowledging this important matter.
If you could just tell us, just give us your name.
Okay, I'm Jackie Bain.
Okay.
I am a community health specialist with the Delaware Public Health District.
And I'm Sergeant Kyle Fox. I work for the Ohio State Highway Patrol out of the Delaware Post.
Thank you. And if you could just explain just a little bit about what we are claiming today.
So the resolution or proclamation before you is in remembrance of World Remembrance Day for traffic victims. Traffic fatalities and serious injury due to traffic crashes is not just an American or state or county issue, it is one that plagues the entire world. And it has been reconciled by the World Health Organization and the United Nations for many years. Back in 2012, the Safe Communities Coalition of Delaware County began to recognize our decedents from our crashes, and it happens to be at the same time of the year. The third Sunday of every year in November is the World Remembrance Day. We generally do ours during the week. We will be observing this day on Friday, the 14th of November, noon, in front of the Highway Patrol post, where we will be placing tags in the hands of our coalition members, community members, and next of kin. And I will read the names of those that have died so far this year. And sadly, I say so far because at the time of printing, we had an additional. We now have had 15 people perish in 11 crashes in this county. Last year, we had 20 people die in 19 crashes, and this is not an issue that is going away. The numbers increase because obviously we have a lot of issues with our roads and our population growth, and we're struggling to keep up with the safety that our roads can provide. And so when we recognize these names, we're not casting blame. We are simply acknowledging that important, loved individuals are no longer with their families because of something that I do not like to call an accident, but a crash is usually because of a human error. And we all need to be mindful of that as we get on the road and we face our holiday celebrations. Remember that these folks were important in our community. So that's kind of the crux of what we're doing.
Oh, thank you. And after, we'll vote on the resolution after any comments, and then I'll read the proclamation.
Yeah, I read the material you submitted, and it's, obviously, these are 15 tragedies that could have been avoided. A lot of them are OVI, I noticed, a significant portion of OVI, a significant portion are people who don't wear their seatbelts.
Yes, yes.
Again, you just get frustrated because those are so, so easy to prevent, yet they still happen. So it's good, you know, we remember those we have lost and focus on this issue.
Exactly. The other thing I find alarming this year, our coalition, we review every fatal crash to see what the trends are, is there something that our public agencies can do something about it. Sadly, enforcement is definitely the thing that is most impactful on driving behavior and education. Engineering is doing their best, but it definitely is a dangerous thing to drive in our county. There are yearly or upward over 3,000 crashes that happen in our county each year. I'd like to share with you.
Thank you.
The Ohio Traffic Safety Office, who funds the position at the Health District for me to run this coalition, they put these facts out. That's a summary of 2024 of all the crashes in the county off of their website, the OSTATs at the Ohio State Patrol. And you can see from the map how much that southern part has a very large concentration of crashes, and that's not surprising. Again, I know that Commissioner Benton, you mentioned about OVIs and seatbelts. The other alarming trend that we're seeing is left of center. Left of center happens more times than not because of distraction, not just because of impairment. So, you know, we have our work cut out for us to educate and keep the public informed and hopefully persuade them to drive a little more safely.
Oh, thank you. Kyle, would you just like, I know you were kind enough to come down and introduce yourself to Commissioner Merrill and myself, pardon me. And so you are going to be with us now in Delaware County, heading the post here for the Ohio.
Yes, I'm on behalf of Lieutenant Curry today, but I am one of the new supervisors at the post. The other one that just came in, me and Dave Overhold both transferred here recently. And then actually, I don't know if you guys know Brian Garlock, but Brian Garlock, another Sergeant, he will be coming back starting this weekend, and he is, he trooped here for the last probably seven or eight years, so he's coming back to home base here soon.
Okay. And you were with, you were in Lincoln County before, you said?
I started in Wilmington, was down there for about two years, went to Circleville for about five, Mount Gillied about five, and then here I am at Delaware for the next foreseeable future. I don't plan on going anywhere. I'm excited to be here and work Delaware County.
Oh, well, thank you. Welcome, welcome.
Thank you.
Any other comments?
I'll just, you know, I guess I'm a little amazed at the number of fatalities in our county. They happen over time, and you kind of lose track of that. My neighbor was killed in Pennsylvania in a car accident earlier this year, so it's not just fatalities in our county, wherever they occur. And it's not just the victims, the people who pass, it's their families, and it actually impacts, if there's a collision of two cars, it impacts both families regardless. So I think it's important that we draw attention to this, and thank you for coming here today for that purpose. Appreciate it.
I appreciate you mentioning that, that it is definitely a ripple effect. Our first responders are affected because they have to deal with it, even the tow truck drivers, those folks that maybe were in traffic and witnessed it. There's always a lot of people that we don't even know have been impacted. I myself have lost family members to crashes. I venture to say there's probably others in this room, and I'm so sorry for all of your loss because it is a very shocking way to lose someone you care about. Thank you for hearing this today.
Oh, well, thank you so much for coming in. We'll vote now.
Vote on motion 25-934, Mr. Merrill.
Aye.
Mr. Benton.
Aye.
Mrs. Lewis.
Aye. And I'll read the proclamation, and then we will get a picture. Whereas the National Highway Traffic Safety Administration estimates that 39,345 people were killed in traffic crashes in the United States in 2024, and reports that Ohio ranked ninth in the nation for roadway deaths with 1,160 fatalities. And whereas Ohio State Highway Patrol reported to 20, sorry, 20, traffic fatalities in Delaware County in 2024, a 33% increase from the year before. And whereas in 2024, 20% of traffic fatalities in Delaware County were OVI-related, and 25% of traffic fatalities were the result of someone not wearing a seatbelt when one was available. And whereas, pardon me, World Day of Remembrance for Road Traffic Victims is a high-profile global event and platform for victims and their families to remember the many millions who have been killed and seriously injured on the world's roads, to acknowledge the crucial work of emergency services, and to acknowledge the suffering of all affected victims, families, and communities. And whereas on World Day of Remembrance, and in the weeks leading up to this day, communities will join together to remember those killed and seriously injured in crashes, to support those personally impacted, and to advocate for implementing evidence-based solutions, actions to end this crisis on our roadways. And whereas the 2025 World Day of Remembrance will be observed by the Delaware County Coalition on Friday, November 14th, to serve as a reminder of the need to increase safety measures. Now therefore be it resolved that the Delaware County Board of Commissioners hereby proclaims November 16, 2025, as World Remembrance in Delaware County, Ohio, signed by Jeff Benton, Barb Lewis, and Gary Merrill, Commissioners. And we will now get a picture. Thank you. Thank you so much. Thank you. Oh, thank you. Thank you very much. And please join us at Neil's Highway Patrol Post if you're available.
Item number five, resolution number 25-935, in the matter of recognizing November 2025 as Adoption, Recognition, and Recruitment Month in Delaware County.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion.
Good morning, Commissioners. Bob Anderson with Job and Family Services. I'm joined by Lynn Stacy, our Supervisor for Adoption and Placement. We're recognizing the month of November as National Adoption Month. Our theme this year is honoring youth, strengthening pathways for lasting bonds. I think we all understand the importance of finding safe, loving homes for youth. Lynn has dedicated her career and our staff to finding foster placements and permanent residency of her youth in our county, and people do that throughout the state and throughout the nation. A couple statistics, in Ohio, we have between 2,800 and 3,300 youth waiting adoption. In Delaware County, we currently have 15 children in placement, and three of those children are awaiting adoption. I am proud to say that we've already completed four adoptions this year in Delaware County.
That's great.
I do want to invite Lynn up. Lynn is very dedicated, she has a strong staff, and I always count on her to fill in the blanks for me as well.
Thank you, Lynn. Oh, I know what you're bringing. Ah, yes, yes.
You'll be able to that.
I'll hold her up. Thank you. Lynn Stacy from Job and Family, thank you. We have completed another successful year. We have 21 licensed homes. Three of those homes are for adoption only. As Bob said, we have three youth waiting for permanent families. One is our now 19-year-old Dante, who is autistic, I think I highlighted him at a previous meeting. We have Bella, who will be 14 in June, she's special needs, and then we have a, actually she'll turn 14 on Wednesday of this week, another youth who has failed adoption in her past, as well as lots and lots of trauma. She's going to be a challenge to find a permanent home for based on her history. We also have currently 25 children in kinship placement, so we continue to do a very good job of finding and recruiting kinship families to take those kids, and eventually legal custody I guess, any questions?
Well, you do just such a wonderful job. I mean, this is your passion, and so many kids and families have benefited from it. You just don't give up. You don't give up. We're so proud to have you. Did you want to add something?
I do, if I can add to this before we pass. I did want to point out that Lynn was recipient of the PCSAO Protective Service Supervisor of the Year Award at the conference in October. Lynn has over 40 years' experience in protective services. She's been with the county since 2006. She lives this every day, putting in extra hours, weekends, mentoring staff and supervisors, and really so proud to work with Lynn and the work she does. She does not only work it, but she lives it, is a past adoptive and foster, a foster and adoptive parent of five.
Oh, my gosh.
So just very proud of Lynn receiving the award and all the work she does here in Delaware County.
Oh, yes. What was that award called again?
It was the Child Protection Supervisor of the Year.
Oh, my gosh.
For the state?
For the state, through our association, correct.
Wow. Yes, yeah.
Quite an award.
These people know how to keep secrets. So that Friday morning, I was sitting there, and I heard 2006, and I didn't hear much more. And I actually got up to go to the restroom because I drank too much coffee that morning. Staff attorney Julie Jones came flying in, and she said, wait, where are you? I'm like, oh, my God, I'm washing my hands. But you got to come now. I'm like, okay. So we walked back in, and I think the next things I heard were Mental Health and Recovery Services Board, Humane Society, and CATS. And that's when I looked at all of my coworkers and went, I hate all of you right now. I do, I hate you. And when my name was said, I was totally floored. Truly an honor, not expected. I just do what I love.
Yeah, so well deserved.
Do it very well.
That is so exciting. Thank you, thank you. We'll take a vote, and then Commissioner Merrill, we'll read the proclamation.
Vote on motion 25-935, Mrs. Lewis.
Aye.
Mr. Merrill.
Aye.
Mr. Benton.
Aye.
I'm privileged to read the proclamation, having two adoptees in my family. Whereas the theme for National Adoption Month, November 2025, is honoring youth, strengthening pathways for lasting bonds, and whereas there are between 2,800 and 3,300 Ohio children living in and out of home settings and awaiting adoption. And whereas the Delaware County Department of Job and Family Services continues to recruit, train, and license qualified applicants for the sole purpose of providing loving and stable foster and adoptive homes to children and youth. And whereas in Delaware County, 15 children and youth in the temporary or permanent custody of the department are residing in licensed foster homes or other out-of-home settings, including group homes and residential centers, three are awaiting adoption, and four adoptions have occurred already in 2025. And whereas the Delaware County Department of Job and Family Services works closely with the Dave Thomas Foundation's Wendy's Wonderful Kids Program to identify adopted families for awaiting children. And whereas children and youth fare best when placed in homes where they are loved and have all needs met consistently. Now therefore, we, the Commissioners of Delaware County, do hereby recognize November 2025 as Adoption, Recognition, and Recruitment Month, and affirm that adoption enriches the lives of both children, families, and communities. Signed by Commissioner Jeff Benton, Commissioner Barb Lewis, and Commissioner Gary Merrill. I'd just like to add, we have an event every year, Foster Families, I believe it's in May again this year, and you do a great job of coordinating that. I'm always impressed by the families that are willing to take in someone's child and take care of them and give the love that they may not be getting, and we're very fortunate in our county, and I take great pride in the fact that we have people always stepping forward and saying, I'll make a difference. So that's all I have there.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, it's a remarkable statistic that we have 15, and the state has 22,000. I mean, I think that's a testament to your team.
If I could add, when I started almost 20 years ago, we had about 85 kids in custody.
Oh, yeah.
So a lot of those were in residential placements, and we're down to, I think we have four in residential right now, which is a high-need child that has, you know, specific things that they need to work on, suicide ideation. And then we'll step them down to a treatment foster home eventually, but yes, yeah, we've done a good job, especially getting those kinship families approved and supporting them.
I mean, again, it's remarkable, you know, to have, you always want zero, but, and we're trending that direction.
Oh, that's right.
To have that much of a decline over the years, thanks to your team and the people of the county, I mean, honestly, you know, our residents really care for the kids who need extra help, so it's just really neat that we can do that. So thank you for everything, again, this year.
Kudos to all our adoptive parents. And we are going to get a picture. Okay. You two. Okay. Thank you. I know. He should get Jeff. Oh, Jeff, no, I think we've taken a little picture.
Item number six, resolution number 25-936, in the matter of permitting Jerome Township Union County, Ohio, to participate in the Delaware County's contract for the provision of cardiac monitors and mechanical CPR devices.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion.
Morning Commissioners, Jeff Fisher, Director of VMS, Delaware County. The recent agreement that we signed with Zoll allowed for a piggyback clause for any entity within the county. Jerome Township reached out to see if they could also join, with them being outside the county. We had to bring it back for your consideration. It's at no cost to the county, and I would ask that it would be approved, but I'm glad to answer any questions.
That's a growing township, so that's great, yeah.
We do mutually with Jerome Township, did speak to their chief on the phone. He said that going to our pricing would save them roughly $12,000, as opposed to going to some other form of cooperative bidding program.
Oh, that's great. Good, good. Vote, please.
Vote on motion 25-936, Mr. Benton.
Aye.
Mrs. Lewis.
Aye.
Mr. Merrill.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Resolution number 25-937, in the matter of approving a right-of-way acquisition service agreement with O.R. Colan Associates LLC for the project known as Dell CR10-5.60, South Old State Road and Hollenbeck.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion.
Yes, good morning Commissioners, Lee Bodnar with the Engineers' Office. This resolution is for an agreement to supply right-of-way acquisition services for the state, excuse me, for the South Old State and Hollenbeck Road intersection project, which is in Berlin Township. That project includes the addition of a traffic signal, right and left turn lanes on both South Old State and Hollenbeck, and also will be widening the roadway in that general location. Construction is scheduled for 10 months, to run 10 months, late in 2026 and into 2027. There's more information available on our website, and we would recommend your approval.
So not a roundabout there, Lee?
Not a roundabout, unfortunately. I know, though, we would like to have a roundabout there, but it isn't conducive, unfortunately.
Yeah.
I just, I'm debating whether this is the appropriate time to make this comment, but we, you're putting a three-way stop at Berlin Station and Curve Road.
Yes.
And that's been, that's needed, and I understand you're going to be putting a roundabout there in the next year or two. In fact, my neighbor was hit there a week ago Saturday, and so timing is good. I'm glad to hear that we're doing something. There is a dangerous intersection. Nobody knows who's going to stop. If you've driven that way, you know what I'm talking about.
Yeah, I do.
Well, safety first, always, Commissioners, as you well know.
Yeah. Vote, please.
Vote on motion 25-937, Mr. Merrill.
Aye.
Mr. Benton.
Aye.
Mrs. Lewis.
Aye.
Resolution number 25-938, in the matter of approving right-of-way permits, so where is she?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion.
Yes, Commissioners, for your consideration, there are eight standard right-of-way utility permits, and we recommend your approval.
Vote, please.
Vote on motion 25-938, Mrs. Lewis.
Aye.
Mr. Merrill.
Aye.
Mr. Benton.
Aye.
Thank you, Commissioner, and Commissioner Merrill, thank you for your kind words.
Thanks, Lee.
Thank you, Lee.
I will, that brings us to Administrator Reports.
Good morning Commissioners, Tracy Davies, Administrator. The Transportation Improvement District Board meets on Wednesday morning at 9:30 right here. That's all I have.
Hmm, ah, that's right, it's Commissioner Benton first.
Don?
Oh, Don. Oh, Eric.
You've done that before.
Yeah.
Eric always has.
Eric always has.
Not this time.
Not today.
Just a few things, Morpse Executive Committee met Thursday, that's, that went fine. They're working on a number of things, as always. The Ag Society's annual vote is tomorrow for Directors of the Ag Society, so I'd encourage you, if you are a member, you had to become a member earlier, you can't sign up there, I would encourage you to go vote tomorrow, it's morning and afternoon hours. Veterans Breakfast, obviously, is a big day tomorrow since it's November 11th. Veterans Breakfast at the fairgrounds as well, I think it starts at 8:30, and then the Veterans Ceremony here at the courthouse at 11:00. Land Bank Meeting at 11:00 on Wednesday, and DKMM Budget Meeting, Subco Finance Committee Meeting, and there's all kinds of meetings. So that's it.
There are all kinds of meetings, yes. Well, Commissioner Merrill?
Well, he took care of a couple of things.
Yeah, I know.
We had the groundbreaking Thursday afternoon, Eric Hostetler present for the Homeport Avenue Chain, pretty well attended, taking the words groundbreaking to the extreme. I mean, the walls are, heading for the drywall again, but it was pretty far along for groundbreaking. But it's amazing how much, and Eric is probably nodding, it's amazing how far they have come in such a short time, and it's going to be a great project for the area for portable housing, and I believe 44 units, if I remember correctly. And looking forward to seeing that finished, and I guess there will be a grand opening in not too distant future. Of course, a board meeting- Of course, a board meeting was Friday, we had a lot on our plate to deal with Friday and we took care of that, and DKMM Executive Committee Meeting this afternoon at one o'clock, that'll be driving tomorrow to County Four. And the Ag elections are tomorrow. I wish they'd do a better job of communicating those elections, that's, I don't think I realized it was Tuesday until last Friday, and you'd think there'd be an email or something go out, so hopefully someone's listening to this and will address that in the future. And then Wednesday, we have OCCO Board Meeting downtown in Columbus, which means I will miss the Land Bank Meeting, so that's all I have today.
The Met Ceremony is actually here at eleven, so.
Yeah, the breakfast is, is at eight-thirty.
Breakfast at eight-thirty at the Fairgrounds, right, right. Okay, we do have need for executive session.
We do. Resolution number two five dash nine three nine, in the matter of adjourning into executive session for consideration of appointment of a public employee or public official.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion, votes.
Vote on motion two five dash nine three nine, Mr. Benton?
Aye.
Mrs. Lewis?
Aye.
Mr. Merrill?
Aye.
We're now reassessed into executive session.
Thank you.